Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the workshop, the work session we have this afternoon. And we'll come back in tomorrow morning and start at 8:00 a.m. We don't have a whole lot on agenda, but we'll try to go through it. I understand Monte Leach is not here because he's been recognized at East Carolina University as a distinguished alumni. And I know Mr. Gentry is not here. I understand he's with his granddaughter or something. But everybody else, our staff and Falcone and Dr. Williamson, and I appreciate everybody taking the time to be here tonight. At this time, we'll get started with the first item on the agenda. And that's accountability result, Dr. Robert Lottler. I need to mention Grady. Grady is not here at the meeting, but he is here virtually. And he's on.
Chairman Smith, Superintendent Williams, Board members, and District Office. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to share with you the 2020-2021 accountability results. We've got those in packets. We had two sheets that we provided you. From the actual book. We done it in pink in honor of Preston Rivers. And as you look inside the book, although accountability was waiting for the 2021 test in a way. We had to test our students. So we done everything we could at the end of last year to get our students in the school to do the assessment. Overall, you're going to be pleased with the percentages. So at this time, the question is asked, are we going to have to test at the end of this school year? And at this time, there's no waiver for the 21-22 year. So the data today is a comparison of grade level. And these are our students that score at level three, four, five. We'll start with the first slide. So as you can see from the first slide, based on the district percentages, starting with grade three, our reading in 2019 was 43.5. And our reading at the end of this school year was 25.8. So a difference of negative 17.7. Fourth grade, 39.9 for 19 and 21.9 for 2021. So a negative 18 difference. Fifth grade, 32.3 for 2019. And 2021, it was 20.5 and negative 11.8 for our fifth grade. Sixth grade was 36.6 for 2019 and 23.6 for 2021. So a difference of a negative 13%. Seventh grade, 34.3, 19, and 22.9 in 21. A difference of a negative 14.4. And eighth grade, 31.6% in 2019, 2021, 26.6. So a negative five percentage. So as you can see compared to our 2019, there is a lot of regression. There's a lot of learning. The learning slide has really been impacted based on the COVID and the students not being in school face to face. So as you can see, there was not a single grade in reading grades through the rate that was on the positive side. As we go to the state, next slide, please, and look at the comparison. And I won't go through all these numbers because you can see if you look on the very beginning where it says PSR secret last column, you'll see that they're all negative numbers. So that lets you know we have a lot of work ahead of us. And after tonight's presentations from some of our experts, you're going to see why some of our programs are very important to the public schools of Robinson County. You can see how it's connected. But as you can see, and we'll just look at third grade, in 2019, 56.8 for the state in reading, 45.1 in 2021, the state had a difference of a negative point seven. We had a negative 17.7. But if you look at fifth grade, we were almost compatible with the state average in fifth grade reading and seventh grade and not too far off from eighth grade. So sixth, seventh, and eighth grade were almost at the state. Next slide, please. Then we get into the mathematics. And as you can see, I don't even have to talk about this slide. The numbers have, the percentages have increased tremendously. If you just look at third grade, negative 32%. Fourth grade, negative 27. Fifth grade, negative 24. Negative 23 for six. Seventh grade, negative 19. And eighth grade, negative 19.
Dr. Robert.
Yes, sir.
This just come to me here, and it's not something I'm saying go back and do with everything, but I'm curious with you and Mr. Bobby. Let's just take fifth grade math there. Has there been any analysis or can it be done? There were, we went back to school last year on campus. What was it, March? Was it March?
2000.
Okay. Is there any way you could look at fifth grade and get the test scores of the kids who went back and came to school from March to the end of the year as opposed to those who stayed home? And I'm not saying look at that from everybody. I'm just curious, would we see a difference with those kids who did come to school those two or three months at the end of the year? And like I said, not everything. I would think that would be too much. But that would be another thing dealing with virtual or being in school, something to look at if it would come out, especially if it comes out that it would be better to be in the school with those kids. Because this is everybody.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
All the ones that actually came back.
Like I said, if it could be just looked at with one, I'd be kind of curious just to see what that would show up. Again, not looking at everything, just pick a grade or sub you can try.
Do we have any idea why there's such, we're seeing such a big difference between English and reading and math as far as the degradation rate? Is there anything that triggered that?
And for the last couple of years, Mr. Bobby maybe had answers better than I, but the math has always been.
Yes, sir.
Across the last couple of years.
Was one of them a new test last year, Mr. Bobby?
The reading was a new test last year.
And a new test would always usually cause scores to go down and change.
Mr. Brewer, if you historically look at the district, we look several years back in the trend data, and as Bobby and Robert have both said, the trend data has pointed that way for quite some time. Math has historically been struggling for the past few years. And some of the work that we're looking at doing and some of the things that we'll talk about a little later, such as math in practice and some pieces that are being put in place to address that math deficit. But it has historically been a slide for several years consecutively.
The one thing I know we've already talked about is making sure we have math kits in our classroom. And this program is working on that on those numbers. Because working with the Lumbee Tribe, with the Project 3C grant, all of our teachers that participated in the math and practice workshop, that was part of the incentive was you'd get a new math kit for your classroom. Because we know our students have to have those concrete, those tangible items in order to be able to apply. Because we see that across the entire district where the application piece is really not ineffective.
Eric.
I was also going to mention, you know, CIA brought before the board to approve for math teachers to teach during their planning period. And so they'll be receiving that stipend each semester. So they recognize that math is an area where the kids are struggling. So the current math teachers in place are teaching students who were where they are don't have a math teacher if there's a vacancy. So they're using their planning period to give. It is virtual, but it's still real life. They can interact with and ask questions. So that, I think that program is.
Currently, we have 35 teachers that are helping us with the mathematics. And that's grades five through 11. So we are trying to do everything we can to make sure those students are exposed. And I think it was an article this week, and I think it was the Charlotte or Fayetteville Observer, one of the local, well, not local, but plus by.
The local newspapers did a, interviewed one of our teachers that's participating in that program and talked about that interaction and how the kids were really surprised that they were getting a live teacher and not a recorded lesson.
It was a teacher from Parnell's Web, Ms. Smith. She was leading into Red Springs High. And the students at Red Springs High was very pleased, based on the article, that they actually had a person that they could talk, you know? Because they thought it was just going to be where they just put the lesson on the screen. There was actually interaction. So that, I think that's going to make tremendous results also.
Dwayne's got a question.
With all due respect, Dr. Robert, I think the problem that we're having more than anything is, let's just be honest about it, is that you tend to grasp it more in class than you do for sure. And that's some of the numbers, I think, is some of the numbers that's. Here again, I think we're also going back to accountability. Where, and I know everybody's probably in here, kids are signing on and they're there watching, teaching, whatever. And I just think you tend to get more when you're in school, just like somebody teaching you out of the house. But if you're not there to have any hands on, you know, I think, I think virtual's just been a real struggle, even though we've had to try to compensate the best way that we could. I just think it's been a, it's just been a tough road to hoe. And with all due respect to the parents and the kids, any way these kids can be in school, they really need to try to be in school because it's just, I hate to say it, but I just don't think virtual's really working. It's not working. But we have to do what we have to do.
And that's why it's our goal to make sure we do all we can to keep our students basically in school. It's the only way we're going to get these numbers on the positive side. I think that's a plus. But I want to share with you some.
Hey, just one minute, Dr. Robert, if you don't mind. Henry had his hand up, and then Terry had his hand up. So let's, let's see, let's.
My question was leading into this question is, what you've already said, how are we looking as far as the amount of math teachers that we have and how many that we need? Do we have those numbers in comparison? I know we're short of roughly, what, 100 teachers? Just estimate. I'm wondering what, how, what the ratio of them are math teachers in comparison when we looking at these scores? And I don't mean to put you on the spot, or if that's something you can bring back to us tomorrow, that'd be fine.
Yeah, that's something we would have to work through, HR to see.
That'd be fine.
But we, what we do know, based on Ms. Erica talking about it with the stipend that they're receiving, is we know that we are addressing 35 classrooms. Now, that's not 35 teachers, that's just 35 classrooms that, because some are teaching two sessions. And then we have some that, for example, at Parnell's Web, where the teachers are actually assigned teaching at that point. So that was a good fit for Mr. Klein, his department. And that's what they wanted. But.
Terry.
From what I can remember, based on our vote or our plan for this year, from what I can remember, I think that we voted as a board to approve students that had documented medical, documented medical issues that couldn't wear a mask or whatever all day. I think we voted to allow those students to attend school virtually, if I can remember. In the last meeting I think we had, I think we had like 900 or so students that were approved to attend school 100% virtually. So my question is, if that's the case, I think we should, or my comment is, I think we should be careful about just saying that, just making blanket statements about online period. Because it seems like if we've got children with documented medical problems or documented medical challenges that are preventing them from attending school and wearing masks all day and doing it, and doing so based on a plan that we voted to approve, then we need to really be careful about the way we address that. And so my question is, do we have a plan? If it's the case that we conduct this, find this data like Mr. Craig said, and we find that students that did attend school or not, or didn't attend face to face, are the ones having these sorts of challenges? Moving forward, do we have a plan to address that other than just saying we hope we get back in school? I'm just putting that out there.
Anybody want to respond? Anybody want to respond to that? Huh?
So with those children that applied for the medical, it was an understanding that two points, we would, they would come back in the building. We would measure things at the end of first, at the end of first semester. Or if the metrics improved, then we define, we're going to define that metrics as if we get down to a 5% positivity rate. So parents at the bottom of that application, when they sign their name, that statement is at the bottom in red, that this virtual learning only is for one of those two conditions, whichever one occurs first. So if at the end of first semester, we're not even better, then we're going to continue with that virtual option. But let's say in March, we get to 5%, and the expectation is those kids will come back in the building.
Dr. Emanuel.
I want to, this is sort of addressing what Bobby said about the 900 children. I got a call this week from a parent, and the parent wanted to know how she could keep her child virtual. Her child had been quarantined. And the quarantine was up, she just continued to be virtual. And I do not know the process, and I showed this to Mr. Craig, I do not know the process what schools may be doing to get those kids back in school when their time is up for being quarantined. So this is one that fell through the cracks. And she wanted to know from me what she could do to guarantee her child could stay virtual. But she went on to give me another reason why she wanted to be virtual, and it was not, the child was sick. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, and this is probably what Bobby was saying, we need to ensure that when these children, their time is up being quarantined, that somebody is calling to say, hey, Linda, your 14 days are up, you need to be in school. But this is a child, and I'm not, I hope this is not the case, that they're waiting for these kids to come back on their own. Some will not. I mean, what, what, what is?
I wanted to address that.
I don't know, what is the process of, when I'm out, especially the big, this is from a large school. Now, this is not a baby school.
Yeah. I think Craig asked, I think Craig asked the superintendent that question when we was eating a while ago. And superintendent, you want to respond? You want Bobby to respond?
Well, we'll make a note of it and check what we're doing. Because we've been clear, somebody needs to follow up and make sure. Because when they leave, they have a return date, so they know what that date is. We just need to make sure we're following up, and we'll make a note of that.
And if I can add to that, we met with our nurses about two weeks ago, and we put in place a cover and response team at each school. And we kind of defined the people who need to be on that team, assistant principal, council, social workers, media, YDS, all of those support folks. And we made it clear at that point that it's not the nurses' job to follow up and say, you're 14 days, you're up, come back. It becomes a responsibility of those social workers in the building.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the cases that I've dealt with, with individuals in our school system, the school counselor called, contacted them, and they certainly bought a negative report back and made them aware that their time was up. I can say that. And I've dealt with five different cases, and they were different schools.
Dr. Emanuel, I saw somebody else had, Dr. Emanuel, then Dwayne.
I want to respond to Mr. Terry, and I can understand to some degree what he's saying. But it's very difficult to argue with those numbers and those facts that kids do need to be in school. I'm not pointing at one over the other. I'm just saying the facts are the facts. We regress when our kids did not come to school. And you can't argue with those numbers.
Yeah, that's very obvious.
Bye bye, law.
Wayne? My question, I would like to piggyback off of Terry said right there. And he does have a valid point about, you know, some kids that have conditions and things of this sort right here. But just to share this with you right here, I've got legitimate facts to where the virtual's being abused. I'm just going to, I'm just going to go ahead and use this because we need to, you know, just put it out there. We've got a situation to where we have over 200 kids that are virtual at the high school. I do know of one student, and I thought we put stipulations on this right here as far as if a child either was going to be virtual or if they were going to be in school. Am I correct on that? It was.
It's a one-time deal. You're one time in. Isn't that correct?
Yes, yes.
I've got concrete information four times with this child. And I'd listen to what Mr. Bobby said while I go about the social workers right here. And I mean, I'm just saying, so if you've got social workers that are having to call these people and touch base with the teachers, and I'm assuming I'm correct on that, is that right, Mr. Bobby? Is that right? 200 kids. How can they even do their job when they're, when they're having to do this right here? And what I'm, and what I'm trying to relay and what we need to be careful on is that if we're not careful, we're going to really start, after this year, you're going to see a serious decline with social workers, teachers, everybody that works in the public schools tremendously. Because there's just, there's just so much on their plate right now. Coming back to where, here again, I'm saying it, to where we're having to cater to the kids because of the parents. And I mean, if a child, if it's one time, then you're at home. But four times, and I can tell you, there's some, there's some more there, too. And I'm not understanding, because I'm trying to figure out, you know, not trying to throw anybody under the bus, but does this not have to be approved at central office before? So I'm trying to figure out how, how this is able to be virtual in school, virtual in school. So I don't know, but I know of a child four times. And I know there's just been a lot put on, let me just say, there's a lot more being put on the high schools. Would that be correct, Mr. Bobby? Would that not be a true statement there as far as virtual?
The virtual application is approved by physician.
Right.
The physician, the children, parents take that application, take it to the child's doctor. The doctor says, yes, able to attend school in person or no, they're unable to attend. So there's no decision on our part here. All of that is solely left up to the physician, and every child that has been declined by the physician, I've personally called them myself.
Would that affect?
But the point, the point, the point that's ringing with me is, he's talking about one child four times. So that, that shouldn't happen, Bobby, right? You shouldn't have one child that can come in, go out, come in and go out.
There's some variables out of our control.
Right.
One of those variables is that when parents do allow the kids to take themselves out, that's one. There is a percentage of kids beating the system. That's going to always be the case with any system, not saying that's right or wrong, but those are variables out of our control. And we left that kind of open now, at the end of semester, whether credit's going to be given. We're looking at a lot of things. What we've said to administrators and teachers, don't get into an argument, fight with the parent over a child, not, because we can't control those variables. But I can say that the percentage of that is low compared to the number of kids that we are serving. But those variables are out of our control.
Would you think that it would be, is it, does it seem to be higher in the high schools, Dr. Williamson, than it is in the middle and elementary grades?
I would say that's a correct assessment on that.
Okay. And like I said, and I'm going to, I just think that it was, that it's more, I just want us to be careful on if they're having, if the social workers or everybody else that's involved, if they're having to keep up with 200 kids, then I don't even think how in the world are they able to even do their job with having? And that's, that's what I'm trying to get to. So I think we need to try to find a way, whether it's them or whoever it is, I think we need to try to, especially in the high school level, because I think that's where it's.
I saw Dr. Emanuel saying, Dr. Emanuel, then.
I just wanted to ask one question. The 900 children that are virtual, does that include the children that are quarantined?
No. Ma'am?
Wow.
Those are 900 kids that, from my understanding, it's 900 kids that applied to be virtual and received medical waivers. That's not including those that are eating out because of quarantine. So we've got 900 kids that's completely virtual right now.
But we could have like, at one point in time, 2,500 children.
Easily. That's my, that's my, that's my concern. That's my concern is that we've got, at a baseline, we've got 900 right now. And I hope, just like everybody else, I hope that things get better. But we've been hoping since, you know, we've been hoping for a long time. And my, you know, my original question is, you know, it doesn't look like it's going anywhere right now. Do we have a plan for ongoing, you know, improvement? Or it just, it, just in terms of like, addressing our language, if a kid's virtual, this is 900 kids, they're virtual, they're in school, or they're supposed to be in schools, whether or not they're online or face to face. And it's a policy that we approved. So we've got to be careful with the way that we address this.
Craig, then Bren.
Couple of questions. And Mr. Dwayne, let me ask, like, you said the one the four times. So is this a kid that was approved to be virtual? Did they come back to school and then got approved to be virtual again? So it's happened for that same kid four times? Okay? Now, if a doctor says, and this is some stuff that we talked about, folks, before this started, if a doctor says this kid can be virtual, we don't question that. We're approved, they're virtual. And we talked about the fact, not putting anybody in the bus, that there was going to be cases where kids is going to be approved to be virtual, and maybe they don't need to be, but they're going to get that approval. And then it's out of our hands. Am I correct? It's out of our hands, they're virtual. And in that case, there were the four times, one of the things pops in my mind, where they go into a different doctor and get an, or a same doctor, it could have been the same. And of course, my thought is, you know, how do you go there? You're approved to be virtual, you go virtual, did they decide to come back to school? And then they come to school a little while and then say, well, I want to go back virtual. So they go back and get it again. And if that's happened one time, like you said, it's happening more than that. Now, if you're virtual, and that's just out there a comment, if you're virtual or in school, right now, it's one or the other. I mean, you in school or you virtual? Now, if we're in school, I'm going to leave that alone. We know what we're doing if you in school. Virtual, when we can come up with what else to do, we're going to all be geniuses, I'm going to say. Because if you're at home virtual, and the kid or the student is not taking the responsibility of getting on there and doing what they're supposed to, and again, if there's not parents that's on there pushing and doing that, I don't. I don't know what any principal, assistant principal, social worker, anybody can do to get that kid on there or get that student on there. And folks, we've all heard since last year when we started this, issues with getting students to do this when mom and dad has to leave home and the child is there all day by themselves. Now, I'm not saying we wash our hands with it, absolutely not. You know, we keep pushing and make pleas when we're in here to parents now. There's some listening now. If you've got a child virtual, you know, do whatever you can to make sure they are listening and doing what they're supposed to be doing. Because there's not a person in here can make that child do that. We all know that. I'm preaching to the choir in here, I'm not preaching, but saying that. But the bottom line is it's one or the other. You're in school or we're virtual. That's the reality. Now, what else we can do? I mean, we can keep talking and try to figure out, maybe there is something else we can do. But now I will say for those kids at school, we doing whatever can be done to make sure we help those. And this one idea, if we're like at Purnell Sweat or Bumberton High or whoever is teaching students somewhere else, that's a very good thing. I mean, that is getting a child in front of a teacher to where they're being taught to that is certified and not having to deal in the sub, in that situation. But it's a concern. I mean, the virtual for me is a concern because we all know the stories we heard last year. And there's some this year. 900 is a lot, but we've got 20,000 students. But then again, when you go out into quarantine for 14 days, something happens, that kid comes back to school. They're not vaccinated. I might be wrong on this, Dr. Williamson. They come back to school, something else happens, they go back home for 14 days. And, and we're dealing with, we've dealt with that since day one. And it's going to continue to be dealt with again. As long as these aren't being wore, as long as people are not getting vaccinated. And we still don't have our children down there, what, below 12 that can get vaccinated. So we're in a bad situation with all of that being said. And I just say, you know, we're going to keep trying to do everything we can to make it better. And, and we all know that and everybody's trying to do that. But it's just a tough situation that we're in, period.
Bren had her hand up.
I, I want us to recognize that we're mandated by law to have face to face learning. And we have, and, and I don't want the public, because everybody think this is a public schools of Robinson County thing, but it's not. We're mandated by law for face to face learning. We're mandated by law to have an exemption, Mr. Bobby, discuss and tell what that is. I believe the team we have in place is doing everything they can to make certain that our students are receiving everything they can, virtual or face to face. There's some things we cannot control. But having a team in place, that is because I deal with a lot of COVID staff and students from the school system with gift packages. People who really care are really going to support their children. People who don't know how to support their children is looking for the staff to do it. And, and, and saying that, I believe our team is doing, I've, I've, I've been to several schools, I've seen them operate. I've seen a lot of things that I never thought we would face. And like Superintendent said, there's a lot of variables out there. Virtual is new to us. It's new to our community. But when you've got a team in place that's trying to work together collaboratively and fill all those gaps and holes, parents are going to hit us because of some things that we say, and I understand what Dwayne is saying. The facts are there, it speaks for itself, like Dr. Emanuel said. And all we can do is work towards a goal we're trying to achieve to make it better. And when we've done all we know to do, that's all we can do. And right now, whatever wasn't done yesterday, they're working on it today. And going forth is all I can say.
Dr. Williams?
Well, I was going to say that last year, we had a mandate, either all, virtual, remote, face to face. This mandate is face to face. There is not a virtual option. And we've said that, and that's our position, because it's the state position for the public schools of Robinson County. So at the end, as I mentioned, whether somebody's going to get credit or not, depends on whether. And that, now, what you're looking at, that difference now as a composite is only part of when you see the individual schools and how wide that gap is, it's going to build a stronger case than ever that it has to be face to face. And Robert has shared that in it. Composite scores kind of look, when you see the individual schools now and how wide that is, that's what's going to really, really make a difference.
And Mr. Ryan, if I could just put a plug in for the teachers. Our teachers are doing everything. We're in the school buildings almost daily. We see what's going on. We know what teachers are doing. They're having to teach, some classes are having to teach face to face and virtual. Because we provide swivels in every classroom to make sure we can meet every child's needs. So I'd just like to say thank you to all of our teachers and support staff because they have gone the extra mile and they're doing everything to meet the needs. But like, I think it was Brother Ian, if we, we can only do so much.
That's right.
And if that child refuses, then what can we do? Because we have tried everything we possibly can, but I'd just like to thank the teachers.
On target.
As we go to the next slide, Mr. Colton, slide six. And we look at the state proficiency in mathematics compared to PSRC. As you can see there, from third grade, a negative 46, almost half of our students. Almost half of our students there. Fourth grade, 34%, fifth grade, 32%, sixth grade, 31%, seventh grade, 27%, and eighth grade, 23%. Ladies and gentlemen, a lot of students right there. A lot of students. And like Dr. Williams said, when we get into our composites per school, you'll see how some of those numbers are adding up. Okay, next slide, please. And if we look at our science, and typically our science scores are pretty decent. But now look at the drop we've had in fifth grade. And I've, and, and first thing I looked at, we finally got the results, Ms. Lloyd's provided those to us. I looked for some of our science teachers in fifth grade. I've personally that always had above 75, 80% of their students passing the fifth grade science test. There were like 15%, 20%. So you can see virtual versus face to face, that is a major, major drop. So 35% in fifth grade and 22 and a half in eighth grade. And then compared to the state, basically it's 35 in fifth and then 22 and a half in eighth grade. And let's look at, well, let me just share this before we go into the high schools. But we tested in grades three through eight. We met the 95% rate in grades three through eight. Fifth and eighth grade science, we tested, of course, over 95%. For the upcoming test, I'm going to share with you, the high schools only tested 93%. So that is a testament to our principals, to our support staff, to everybody doing all they could to get those students back to test. Now, it was a challenge for some of our schools. But they went out and they really worked with those parents in those communities. Because we didn't, we didn't think we would hit the 95% mark, but they'd done everything they could to do that. So we're, we're thankful for, for their leadership. As we look at the high schools, next slide, please. Math one, you'll see there on the left for 2019, PSRC, and 2021, we had 30.7% 19, 14% in 21. So we had a difference of 16.7 in math one. Math three, 24.7 for 2019, 16.3 for 2021, a difference of negative 8.4. And then for biology, 48% for 2019, 24.6 for 2021, a difference of a negative 23.4. And English two, which if you look at that, you say the negative six, you know, compared to what we've been seeing, you know, but still, that's a lot of students, negative 6.2 in English two for the 2021. Okay, and then for the state, look at the state difference. For math one, negative 16, math three, negative 2, biology, negative 14, and English two, a negative 1.2.
Robert, can I say something?
Yes, sir.
So you, you look at math one, look at the difference between the state, look at our proficiency rate. That's how we made the decision about, we have to move math one to grade eight. And those kids, and whatever we set that cut score at, those kids will have a chance to be back, back in at grade nine for math one. Because they won't take another math EOC until math three. And we don't want to wait until the junior year or the senior year. Hopefully, they have to take math three by the junior year. Our hope is that we can have the kids ready by sophomore and a high percentage to take that math three test. If not, then they have to take it again. So it is critical, but at 14%, look what we're up against. For a gateway math, right, the gateway math.
So by the year 2025, we will have, all of our eighth graders will be taking math one at the school. And that was the grant that we worked with U S C P, and they came to be presented to the board. We were able to purchase textbooks this year for the eighth and ninth grade, eighth and ninth grade teachers. And they've already done several workshops in PD. So that has to be implemented by 2025. Okay, next slide. And then we look at the, the comparison with our ACT and our word keys. As you can see there, for the proficiency in 2019 was 32.7 for the ACT, 26%. In 2021, with a difference of a negative 6.7. And for the state average, the proficiency was 55.8, 55.2 for 2021. So of negative 0.6 in the state average. And then for word keys, and this is silver or better, we had in 2019, 60.9%. And 2021 was 50.7%. And the difference was a negative 10.2. For the state, it was a negative 2.2. All right, any questions on any of those slides before we go into the composite scores?
Dr. Emanuel?
I don't have a question, I have a statement. If you traced the proficiency, those who made proficiency, if you could trace those children all the way down from grade three up, you would see those children making those substandard scores all the way up, all the way through the ACT, all the way up. And it starts out, math is sequential. If you get a kid and the kid can do the addition facts, subtraction facts, timetables, they can read a ruler, they can tell time, they can do the associative, distributive, and community properties. If you get a kid and they learn those sequential things and keep adding to it, they're going to get the math things. But what I'm trying to say is, it's building on top of each other. And it goes all the way through high school. If they don't have those basic facts and it keeps adding, you keep seeing those children, those same children that are not scoring proficient. And now, do I have a solution? And like Craig said, if I had a solution, I'd be a billionaire. But that's the fact. Our kids learn sequentially and those basic things that I mentioned in math, kids don't know it. I have a grandchild right now that tells time by a digital watch. Very smart kid. I'm trying to say is there are basic facts that children just don't know. That you've got to have those basic mathematical facts to order to even do any kind of math and to build on those math facts. And it shows all the way up. Man Craig's a math teacher, he knows what I'm talking about. And our kids, for whatever reason, don't have those basic math facts. So they can't do math efficiently in those grade levels.
But Dr. Emanuel, later on tonight, you will hear some of the interventions that
Yeah.
got put in place, some great presentations.
Anna's got a question. It comes to my mind that, you know, it sounds like the state as a whole is on a decline, but I know we have, and correct me if I'm wrong, we have representatives from DPI coming to visit different departments at different times and looking at curriculum and giving us instructional, guide us, I would say. What are other LEAs doing that are higher performing that we could probably capitalize on? Is there anybody looking at that?
We have and we are through the consortium making those comparisons. Also, some of that work is pulling in high performing teachers to do curriculum work. At the end of the day, we have to change the way that we're instructing in the classrooms. We're going to hear about classwork, we'll create that individual best important keys, breaking. So, so again, we're going to hear about those kinds of things and why we're invested in that. But answer that question, yes, yes.
Go ahead, Robert.
And like Dr. Emanuel said, with the word keys, for those of you that, for the subjects, it deals with graphic literacy, applied math, and workplace documents. And like Dr. Emanuel said, those basic math facts, you know, really helps out. So, so those three areas are, are the subjects our kids have to do well in in order to become like silver. Okay? All right, any questions on the slides? And if you would, I think in your packet, you have these two handouts that we presented you. What I call a large sheets of paper. Why are you looking for those? I just want to share something that I saw, really caught my eyes. Some of you probably already seen it. But someone was mentioning about a kindergartner in class today, in school today, has never been in school. Most of those kindergartners that we serve right now have never been in school. A first grader has never been, has never seen a normal school year, a normal school year. Second grader has never had a normal school year. And a third grader currently in our schools, they had a normal school year was when they were in kindergarten.
That's true.
That is a fact. And I look at the seventh graders. Soon to be high schoolers. The last time they were at a normal school year, they were in fourth grade. So we have a lot of work to do. But we're ready for the challenge. We're going to meet those challenges. I'm going to share something with you at the end. But if you look at the composites on your chart there, in 2017, 2018, the public schools of Robinson County was, was identified. They came up, we came off the local form list in 2017, 18. In 2018, 19, the last year that we have test results, you know, we've missed being off that local form list by one school. So we know what we can do and what we're capable of doing. But we have to refocus and think about every child. And that's what the team's going to talk about tonight, that individualized planning. That is a must, that we focus on every single child, what their needs are in order to get us back to high performing district. So if you look, you'll see there, I mean, schools with a difference, starting at the top, 30.6%. Next, 22%. 21%. Now, these are A, some of our A schools that had drastic, drastic learning loss and learned the decline, the regression. 42.6%. 23.3. Going down, negative 12.5, negative 17.3, negative 22.3. Negative 31.3, negative 7.7, negative 9.8, negative 25.2. Negative 12%. Negative 31, negative 16.2, negative 20.5, negative 14.6, negative 22, negative 17, negative 25.6, negative 16.2, negative 26.1, negative 17.2, negative 12.3, negative 21.1, negative 26.9, negative 25.4. Negative 17.2, negative 17.1, negative 26.4, negative 4.5, negative 19.3, negative 30.4, negative 22.1. For district composite, negative 19%.
Dr. Emanuel?
I want to say that I don't think we can hang our head in despair. If you remember, some If you remember, summer program that was the system experience this summer and you heard many of us comment that it was the best beginning to a new beginning that I had ever seen and many of you commented the same thing. So I think we have a lot of work to do. There are going to be bumps in the road, but I don't think we can give up. You know what I mean? And just say we made bad and we're just going to say, oh, you know, we made bad, but so did many other school systems regress. So I think that just, they with a positive attitude and God knows, I don't know how our teachers can work any harder.
I agree.
And I, I think that we're going to improve and looking at this summer, I would have loved to have given that standardized test right after the kids left, those that attended, because it was a great beginning and I have hope and I know we're going to do better. But like Robert said, some of these children missed three years of schooling almost. And I, I'm, I'm really, really, and I know most of y'all, all I mean that I talked to, we have hope for the future and we're going to get over this. It's maybe take us two to three years to build back.
That's right.
Come out of it.
It's a process, it's all a process and we've got a good leadership team. We've got a good staff and it's one child at a time. We're going to try to make a positive difference. I believe everybody in this room feels that way. I know I feel that way. We didn't get here overnight and it's not going to be overnight that we come out of this. But we gotta, we gotta believe that we, that we can make a positive difference in the public schools of Robson County. I believe that. Craig.
Same thing you're saying, Mr. Colvin, he knows I do this. What's our number right now?
Eight people.
Eight, okay, that's not many. I didn't think there would be. But in fact, I think everybody's agreeing with what Dr. Manuel said and I know I do. There's no way, and I was hoping there's a lot, but there's no way I would blame teachers for what we see on here. Don't do it. And, and I know, and I don't want nobody looking at this or even us in here thinking that's what we're doing.
That's right.
Now, these numbers, they sound bad, they are bad, but it's not a blame on teachers, anybody working in our school system, you know? I'm sorry, far as I'm concerned, it's COVID-19. Now, that put us in the situation we're in, in the storm. I mean, when you talk about children, now I got a grandchild in the third grade and I think they went through what the third grade is. And, and I know for a fact, after she went to summer school this summer and there was things that she did and accomplished this summer that she hadn't accomplished simply by not being in school. And it's not just her, it's every child.
That's right.
That summer school and we talked about Mike can do it next year, if it can be done again. I definitely think it was a help. So by all means, we're not beating up on anybody because we know, we said it before, everybody at the schools is working and working and working, workshops and everything else, meetings, doing things differently. And sometimes that's hard, many times it is hard. So by no means, we're, we're, make sure people understand and when y'all go out, that, that we're not beating up on nobody. We're trying to give information to help us improve and that's what we want everybody to do. And again, and I know nobody's listening now and the way that's good. We know what people are doing. And you go to schools, I think all of us go to schools and you don't see anybody sitting around doing nothing. No campus, they're, they're working and, and we appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman.
Just one, as one minute, Dwayne has, Dwayne in your Denver.
And I, I totally agree with you, Mr. Craig, and suspicion that I was making a while ago. Listen, I'm not, I'm not beating up on the kids, on the parents. I just wish there would be a little bit more sympathy from the parents instead of just the I, 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 me, me, me. When, when we see it, these, I'm telling you, it's bad when your custodians look stressed. I mean, I'm just telling you, I, I mean, they're, they're just, I mean, it's just like, it is. And to be honest, Matthew hit us when?
16.
16.
We haven't, we haven't, we haven't had nothing decent. I mean, as far as anything being consistent outside of turmoil and tornadoes and COVID and everything over the past five years, we haven't had nothing good as far as consistency, as far as being able to get back in school, to be able to pick pieces up. We haven't had nothing. And I, I just really wish parents and, and you just can't stress it enough for, for them, you know, knowing that they're doing virtual, knowing that they're doing in the school system right here. And what bothers me more than anything is these kids and parents should know that they're not doing nothing but hurting their kids in and out and in and out. There's no consistency going on with a child if you're not staying up with that child and trying to help that child. So I just urge parents to work hard. If things don't go your way, don't blow up. Things don't go my way, I don't blow up, get it off your chest. But when you, but when you're raising that sand, you're not getting nothing accomplished when they're already being, their fingers are being worked to the bones, their minds, they're doing everything they can do. And I think it's time that you, they need to try to give the system a little bit more support. I think if they'd get a little bit more support, then I think you would, the morale, we've always discussed the morale. I think it would start helping the morale a whole lot better, even though when, when teachers feel like throwing their hands up. I don't, I don't want them to throw their hands up. I'm here to help, I'm here to help anybody, everybody, but we got to be able to help ourselves. Help your kids, help the teachers, help the parents, everybody help themselves, I think we'll, we'll be okay.
Anderson's floor.
Superintendent, one of the things that I've ran across with the pre-K teachers and even some of the students that come to first grade or kindergarten, some of them are taught at daycares and then whenever they come to public schools, they have to start over teaching these students. And sometimes it brings confusion for some of the students trying to learn based upon what they was taught in daycare. So I don't know, I don't know if there's something that we can do to where all of a teacher basically the same thing, so the children, they don't have to start over with their kids. But that has been a struggle for listening to some of our staff, for some of the children. That can, might can make a difference, Mr. Robert, if everybody's teaching the same whenever they come in. I don't know how we'll do it, but I think it will help.
Terry's got the floor.
So we, we talking about Matthew and COVID and it's been X number of years, 2016, I think, Matthew. If, if any, the lesson that we should really learn from all of this is that we need to be dynamic, is that we need to be, so when, when I hear things like, I'm, I'm a sentimental person. I'm sentimental about the good old days of, you know, whenever everything was all hunky dory. But I just, it's going to be, it, it's tough in my mind to square that we're going to get back to the way it was before. Because I'm telling you, I worked in online learning for years. I've been working in and around online learning since 2000. It's Pandora's box, it's Pandora's box. You've given these parents and students the opportunity to, to experience learning online, you know, full time and we're still, you know, we're still doing some of that along the way. But if we don't really embrace, I'm not, I, I, I don't want us to have a, I don't want us to be a, I'm not saying that online is the only way. I'm not saying that we should, you know, have an online district. But what I am saying is that we need to figure out how to, how to do both efficiently. Because it's, it's going to be, it's, it's hard for me to imagine a time in which we are 100% face to face with the number of students we had. Because there's districts all around us creating online academies. There's online academies being created at the, at the state level as well. So if we don't, I feel like if we don't become more dynamic, we're either going to, we're, we're, we're going to lose students, students, because they've, all of these opportunities are being created with, with these funds.
Okay. Buddy Manuel.
Mr. Terry, have you talked with Ms. Terry that works with us about our online programs?
Who?
Ms. Terry, what's Terry's last name?
Langley.
Ms. Terry Langley.
Talk with her.
Yeah, talk with her. We have some online programs and also the high school has online programs. You know, I'm not saying we don't have online programs, I don't mean that. But also in the seventh and eighth grade, at one point in time, we were live streaming classes and they may still be doing that. So there are online programs, but not like you're saying like you have an option to take instruction online or not.
That's what I thought that the, um.
Yeah, we have online programs, but Ms. Terry Langley can give you a good update on that. But I know what, you, you're probably talking about like regular classroom, like an academy. I think the superintendent, didn't you tell us one time you had an option to do online or something, regular classes? Or, I don't remember, didn't you mention that one time to us?
Well, there was an option last year and you can apply for an academy.
Yeah.
But the turnaround date on it was something like a couple of days. There was some legislation that would have allowed you to reapply, but that didn't make it through. So the message is really being clear. And then the other part is what you're talking about, about a virtual academy, which is online. And Rob, we have 500 plus kids. This year normally that's 700.
This year, the online, the students opted to be face to face. Because we asked Terry Langley that question, why, why do you think the number has dropped? I think it was 423, something like that. He said, because the kids want to be back on school.
Yeah.
I mean, back on campus.
And we used to have kids in the seventh, seventh and eighth grade online too. With, I guess what I'm saying, there are opportunities to be online, but it's not like you're speaking now. We do have opportunities unless they've stopped and I don't think they have.
North Carolina Virtual Public School, I can't remember the exact number.
And PSRC has its own online program.
It has 423, that was the last number Terry gave us. I can't remember how many we had into virtual public schools.
And we have an opportunity for middle school kids to take high school courses if they qualify.
So I hope this is, I hope this is a lesson in being dynamic, you know, for all of us.
Yeah.
And, and change, change management for sure, because we've experienced quite a bit of it. And I think there's what's next.
Lord have mercy.
Go ahead, Robert.
Okay, and the last thing I want to leave with you.
Can't say no more of that.
God, I hate it.
We were taking off the local form list, you know, we had these framed for several people and I can't remember if we got the board members, but it's something I look at every day when I walk in. It says local schools exit low performance list. That's what we want to do at the end of this year.
Right.
That's what we will do at the end of this year. And in September of 2022, a little over a year from now, in the Robesonian, here's what it's going to read. The public schools of Robson County is no longer on North Carolina's list of low performance school districts. And the schools show gains overall in important areas, annual accountability report that was released by the State Department of Education. Now that's what I want to see September of 2022. Ladies and gentlemen, if we, I mean, all the PSRC employees, parents, students, do not care about education, I can stand up here all weekend, all weekend. I'm going to make it. If it doesn't start here in your heart, then it's not going to happen. Because we know what we're faced with, we know what we have to do. But if we have the right people caring about our 21,000 students every day.
That's right.
Not on Fridays when you know you won't have sin for two days. But you want to see those babies come in every day and teach them all that you can, it will happen. So I'm going to keep this, I'm going to remind you maybe every board meeting so we can get out there in the public. Now that's what I know we will see in the Robesonian in 2022. They might as well go ahead, Dr. Burnett's not here, but I'll help him write the article. Because it's coming. Thank you and thank you, board members, for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Rob.
About a public education, man, you might need to be a preacher somewhere.
What's that?
Out in the public education, you might need to be a preacher somewhere.
Oh yeah, pastor. What's your name, pastor?
Thanks for going to federal programs, is that correct?
Yes, correct. Good evening, Chairman Smith, Superintendent Williams, members. I echo exactly what Dr. Manuel said, except my statement is we can and we will. That has been my statement to my staff for months now, that is not a new statement. They know that I tell them at the office, we can and we will. So I'll start off with that statement to follow up. Pastor of the church, I'll be there as the usher taking up. So with that being said, if we could go to the next line, please. So we want to start off this evening, as Dr. Manuel and all of you have said, the results, we've seen the results. We know what the results look like. I've been in this business for quite some time. I've seen Robeson have results over and over. I've seen us go into some upswings and I've seen us go into some downswings. Our goal at this point is to continue that uptick and make it happen this year and then have a continuous pattern regardless of COVID, regardless of hurricanes, because we can and we will. So I'd like to have you to look at the screen before you. What does this number represent, 1,025?
Days to make achievement.
That's the only thing I could think of.
Pretty close. Other, any other individuals want to take a stab at it?
What I have in my bank account.
And I need to get closer to you.
That's nothing.
So it's actually one, that, that's why I need to get closer to you. So it's 1,025 instructional hours. That's what we have each year that we are in school. We have 1,025 instructional hours. What happens during that 1,025 instructional hour? So the work that we talk about in the department, in our department specifically, because we supplement and complement everything that Dr. Locklear does in his department with federal funding, with federal dollars. So I have two guiding questions for you this evening that we talk about in the department. What does teaching and learning look like? And what does teaching and learning sound like? And then I'm going to add a third question that I threw at my staff today. And my third question today, I asked them, is there a fixation? Is there a fixation on learning? We must be fixated on that learning. The numbers that Robert just shared with us, that is not numbers that are reflective of how our student, our students are learning. As you said, Dr. Manuel, that is dismal, but we can overcome those. With the right approaches, with the right strategies, with the right frameworks for support, we can make that happen. So I'd like to share with you a video. And as you watch that video, I would like for you to think about what resonates with you during this video.
Hi, my name is Shelley Moore and I'm a third year PhD student at the University of British Columbia in Vancouver. Hi, my name is Shelley Moore and I'm a third year PhD student at the University of British Columbia. Finding and embracing the strength in our diversity. This value, however, hasn't been reflected in our classrooms, which still segregates students by ability, especially students with developmental disabilities. There's a gap in our understanding about what we know inclusive education to be philosophically versus what we understand and the importance of understanding inclusion in our practice. This is the question I'm trying to answer in my research, is how can we find the value in the day to day practice in our classrooms in terms of inclusive education? So how am I going to explain this to you? Now, I could sit here and try and describe this, or we could have a little bit more fun. Why don't we go bowling? So let's talk about bowling. You have 10 pins, you have two balls and you have a lane. The goal is to knock down as many pins as you can. But if you don't get them all, it's okay because you have another chance. But when I bowl and roll the ball down the middle and I don't knock them all down, what often ends up happening to me is that there's two pins left standing on either end and they stare at you. It's the seven, 10 split and it's the hardest shot in bowling. How is bowling like teaching? The ball is the lesson, the pins are the kids. We aim for the middle, we do the best we can. The pins are left standing, we often have another chance to kind of get to them. But at the end of the day, those two pins that are staring, looking at you are kids who But at the end of the day, those two pins that are staring, looking at you are our kids who need the most support and our kids who need the most challenge. So we end up choosing one and the other one is left standing. I just took all the fun out of bowling. Now, I don't know how many times you've watched professional bowling, but I spent an afternoon watching professional bowling. And let me tell you, there was not one bowler who rolled that ball down the middle of the lane. They throw the ball down the lane at a curve. And I was actually really curious about this, so I called up a professional bowler. He was so excited, I don't think he gets a lot of calls about education. He said, the reason why the ball has to enter at a curve is because you will knock down more pins and create a bigger domino effect if you enter at that angle. But in order to do that, you have to change your aim. In order to knock down the most pins with one shot, he aims for the pins that are the hardest to hit. Now let's just let this sink in for a second. We are taught to teach the head pins. We are not taught to teach the kids who are the furthest and the hardest to get to, the kids with autism, the kids with Down syndrome. The part that's critical here, and it really aligns with universal design for learning, is that so often the supports that we design for those kids on the outside of the lane are actually supports that all of the kids need. This is the part we need to understand if inclusive education is going to move forward in Canada. How can we find this value of diversity in our classrooms between the students? This is not just important for the outside pins, but it's critical for every single one of us. And just think, all we need to do is change our aim. Look how bowling changed education.
So thoughts, other than it's from Canada. So thoughts about that, what, what did you garner from that? Was there anything that resonated with you?
One of the things that resonated with me is, you know, while we're, while we're talking about trying to, trying to raise test scores, in my mind, I'm, I'm concerned about the students that are already at a, at a high level. Are we, what are we doing to those students? Cause I've saw a lot of those students, you know, I don't have any specific examples that I don't want to share. But in the past, I've saw those students get lost in the, lost in the weeds.
They get lost in the weeds, but as, as, as the video showed, you got to, you got to get to all of them to affect those as well. So the ones that are to the angle or to the side, it's all about inclusive, as it said. You got to get to close some of the gaps, you got to reach out to all of them. The low ones, the bad ones, the good ones, the short, the tall ones, whatever you want to say. You got to bring the ball back on board.
Sounds like, sounds like the twist on the ball. And the part that you're aiming at and the cluster is the key. Now, the question that will come to my mind is, what is the twist that we're gonna put on the ball?
What stood out to me was from the beginning when she said value, she used the terminology value. One thing that a bowler do is a bowler value what he's doing when he grab that, he or she grab that ball. And they're gonna throw it a certain way to aim at what they're trying to target. And I believe that once our community and county value education the way that it should be valued, I believe we can go even greater than what we think than ever before.
Dwayne. What I kind of seen right there was, it was easier to hit the ones up front than it was to get to the ones in the back. So is it like?
I think like.
I'm gonna work hard to get to the easy ones and then stop. Or am I gonna dedicate myself to keep the, to keep those students there performing that are easy accessible? That when I get to the ones in the back that I have to work a little harder with, am I gonna be making that commitment to, to make a change for them?
I think too, a great teacher or administrator begins with the end in mind. What is it I want to achieve? I know I have all these children with all these needs, so let me think how I'm gonna reach them all. They all need support regardless if they're in the, ahead of the class, in the middle of the class, behind the class. So as I said, begin with the end in mind, what kind of game plan do I have to reach them all academically and with the support? So that's what I saw.
Any others?
To put this all in perspective also, if you really look at it, you know, they talked about the lane, they talked about the pin, they talked about the ball, but what's something that they didn't talk about?
The one that got.
Hate to bring it up, but it's called a gutter. So if you think about the gutter, are you gonna, are you gonna be effective or are you just gonna go right on by?
I'm sorry. Yes.
What he did was just the basic engineering principle to an engineer. He's got to give orders from here to the other end of the field. He thinks of all this crap and then succeed in order to cover all the space and go all the way to the end and figure that friction. Now, in his mind, that makes it available to all the other ports of the circuit he's gonna do. But the problem between bowling and engineering with children is that spin that Brewer talked about, that spin has to be applied to each pin. There's the key. See, he's looking at it as the whole, but in teaching, you're gonna have to put that spin on each pin. Each pin has to be able to connect to that spin. If not, you've lost, you've lost some, some work, you're losing.
So in other words, you gotta change your aim. You've gotta change your aim, yes, Dr. Williamson.
And to pick up a flip, it takes a lot of practice.
Practice.
Lot of practice.
But I'm about picking up the spares, babe.
Seven, 10, you're doing.
So we know who know we the champion in this room. So with that being said, we want to, we wanted to share that with you because as we've moved in our department and the direction that we're working very collaboratively with, with Dr. Locklear, we've had lots of conversation, what does that mean? The funding that you're getting ready to hear about, what does that mean? How are we using that funding to change the, our aim? How are we becoming, have we and will we continue to be dedicated to the promotion of inclusive, equitable and meaningful educational experiences for all students? And I think all of you have said exactly what we thought about when we watched it ourselves, is we've got to get to every student. Dr. Emanuel, you said it perfectly earlier, those skill deficits. You talked about that progression in math. We've got to get to those skills. So what we're wanting to do to this evening and into, into the morning is talk with you about where we're headed, why we've made the decisions we've made and how we are going to put that twist on that ball and reach every student, because definitely the test score showed that we've got to do a different spin.
Good evening, Chairman Smith, Dr. Williamson, board members and central office staff. So as we said today, there's a lot of things that we need to work on together. And so how are we gonna change that aim? So we're gonna change the aim through working through school and district improvement. So as Mike Schmoker says, school improvement is not a mystery, it's incremental. Even dramatic improvement is not only possible, but probable under the right conditions. So how do we do that? How do we change the focus? So as you've heard over the last several years, I've spoken about it many times, we focus on those key indicators. But this year, we're also making a stronger, clearer focus on instructional leadership. So as part of that instructional leadership, that means we're also focusing on specific standards that align with that instructional leadership. So what you can see is our focus in our school, school permanent plan is on standards aligned instruction, monitoring instructing, instruction and giving regular teacher feedback and data decision making. And so that way you can also, the district indicator, we're working on district curriculum guides, school improvement, student learning outcomes, resource allocation for instructional improvement, and available user friendly data. So all those essential components that help us ensure that we can put that equitable education in every student's hands.
So with that being said, so I think we've all said it really, really well a few minutes ago. Our folks are working hard, our teachers are working hard, staff working hard. But with what we've seen over time, as you've alluded to, the five years, prior to the five years we've had our ups and downs in Robinson, I think I would say that the hurricane and pandemic has exacerbated what we've seen. So with that being said, how are we going to do this? Do we need more hands on deck? We need to make sure when we're twisting that ball, that we have additional supports in the, in those buildings to help our folks, because as some of you said, they're tired. We're all tired, we're all stressed. But we know beyond that, we have a mission. And that mission is to educate the children of the public schools of Robinson County. And I know my staff gets exhausted with me saying it all the time, because my grace is here now. My grace is my granddaughter, she's at Pembroke Elementary. So I'm always looking for how to improve Grace's future. But then there's somebody else in this room who has another grace. Bobby has Bentley. We all have a vested interest in this district. So how do we come together and create a framework of support for the district? And all of us come together with one team, one goal. So if you'll look at the framework for support, over on the left side, you'll see PSRC principals, instructional leaders. That has been a very strong message that we have sent forth throughout the district this year, that principals are the instructional leaders. We all know most, Craig, you've been a principal before, excuse me for calling you Craig, but Mr. Craig, we've been, you've been a principal, Terry, you've been principal. Many of us in this room have been principals before. We know that day to day grind operationally. You'll start on a mission and somebody will take you off that mission. When you're headed in that classroom to do that observation, something's gonna happen. So with that being said, our thoughts were, we've got to ensure that our principals are those instructional leaders. That they've got to get in those classrooms, they've got to see that teaching and learning. They've got to ensure that there is a fixation on learning. So with that being said, what we've done with the framework of support, we do have the work that we're working with, with the Department of Public Instruction. We do have the school coaches. We also have ensured that all of our schools this year have, have a coach. We now have 36 coaches in the district. Zach Jones, some of you know Zach, it still works collaboratively between Robert's department, our department, as the K2 literacy person previously or specialist. He is also serving as our district wide coach with seven schools. So now we're ensuring that there are thought partners in every one of our schools. There are coaches there to help support that principal, to be that instructional leader. Then when you look next on the framework of support with extra funding, that was a directive we received. Dr. Williamson looked at me directly in my hazel eyes and he said to me, I want assistant principals to help with operations in this building. And, and I want it done through federal funding. I heard him and I heard him and I heard him. And guess what we made happen? We made happen those assistant principals to provide that support system for our principals as instructional leaders. So now we have an assistant principal in every school. And that is due to the vision of Dr. Williamson. So thank you, Dr. Williamson, for working through that and making that possible. I've heard some positive, positive comments from our principals. Then we have the instructional support that Wendy will be sharing with you later, our academic coaches. I believe Wendy, we're now at, how many academic coaches?
28 on Monday.
28 on Monday, and we also have placed in 24 teacher assistants. We have, is it 24?
We have 36.
36. And we have 16 that we have to place, I know that. And so we looked at the enrollment just a few weeks ago with Melissa's help. And now some schools will get an additional two TAs. So again, that is to support that structure within that building. So again, more hands on deck, one team, one goal. And we also have intervention, as we've been able to find four, we're looking for more. So that is our framework for support in moving forward. Yes.
Is this a continuation of information that was provided in our previous board meeting from the two representatives from the state level? Or is this just a piece of the pie that fits in? When they were talking about they had pulled a representative body and they were into training.
Yes, this is tied to relay, some of the work that we're talking about, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yes, there, there is a tie. If you'll look in the yellow area, those school leadership coaches, there is a tie to relay. And we have three what are called now school leadership coaches from DPI. And so they're working within our schools as well. So yes, that does. Any other question about, questions or question about the framework for support? Or the framework of support? Yes.
Go ahead, Dottie, mate.
I don't know if this is the right time, so you tell me that so and so is gonna address it and I'll wait. Okay. Here's the principal, okay? All right. Here's the central office, here's the principal, here's instructional coach, here's DPI. What other support am I missing?
Your assistant principal, your executive.
Okay, all right. And we all know that we need to improve our math scores, let's take the math scores, all right? Do the principal, okay, the central office says, this is my blueprint, this is our blueprint that we've decided, this is what we're going to do, okay? All right, then the principal decides, he says, hey, I see this online, this is super great. They did it in Nash County. I think I'm gonna implement that with my teachers, okay? Then the curriculum specialist comes in and she says, oh, wow, I like this, we're gonna do this with this school. She brings that to the teacher. All right. Then DPI says, this is great, we're using this all over, we're gonna bring this. I guess my question is, how, what is the dose of medicine? One dose that is going to the school, to the teacher, the classroom teacher, so those teachers won't be bombarded with a dose of medicine from ever contingency? This is, explain to me how this is working and also what, what assurance? How does, how do all of these people get the same dose of medicine to improve math? Let's say a third grade, in other words, it might be elementary primary. This is my concern and it's always been a concern. When you have a lot of people joining forces to help people and that's a good thing, there's nothing wrong with that. But if there's not the same dose of medicine to help them, you understand where I'm going?
Yes.
You absolutely overwhelm these people. And training isn't a key part, that there's a dose of medicine that we're all going to use so that that teacher will not be frustrated, as Dwayne said and some more of us have said, that they're overwhelmed. And there's a training for that dose of medicine, there's a training for that dose of medicine, there's a training. And you see what I'm saying?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Okay, address that fact that you've got all these support people in different leadership functions or whatever. Where's the instrument to help with the math? The one instrument that we're going to use that won't overwhelm the teacher?
So let me.
Jennifer, before you answer it and before Dr. Williamson answer it, because I, I know he's got an answer. I'm that teacher. I'm sick of listening to all of this stuff from these different people. And I got to decide what am I gonna do? And in reality, I got my family home too. I got two children at home. Now I got to carry this stuff home and figure out what am I gonna do tomorrow for class? That's the reality, and I know y'all noticed, but that's the reality that teachers are dealing with at the school level when they're getting bombarded with all of this stuff after dealing with 28 kids that day. And so I know y'all got an answer, but I'm just, I've heard the same thing, what Dr. Emanuel's saying. And we, we've heard the same thing, that they're getting bombarded. And I know we're looking at doing new things and I know y'all have got an answer, but that's one thing that I'm glad's come out tonight.
Well, let me share with you first of all, Dr. Emanuel, I, I think I process and I hope I process what I'm hearing. And I'm just gonna allude to one thing and that will yield to Dr. Williamson too. So we've worked seamlessly in the county, at the district level to have one. So we've worked seamlessly in the county at the district level to have one message. So that one message that we're really rolling out right now would be the multi-tiered system of support. That is not anything new. It is not anything new. The MTSS that we're rolling out is actually been around, Dr. Manuel, remember called SSMT?
Okay, I, I guess my question is too early. I understand the system of support, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about improving math scores specifically, something that the, the curriculum people would do, the, what are they called, the coaches?
Academic coaches.
Academic coaches. I'm not necessarily talking about Phillips program.
I'm with you.
Okay, I'm not talking about that component, I understand that. I'm talking about the teaching and learning, not, not Mr. Phillips' part.
That is the teaching and learning.
Well, let me go back and say, SSMT, I'm not talking about that per se.
You're talking about, if I understand you correctly, what's happening to elevate the math scores?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's her biggest concern based on what I'm hearing sitting right here. So if you could address, Mr. Henry's got his hand up, if you wanna try to address that, that's fine. God, I know we got one team, one goal, gotta have strategic plans.
Exactly.
And you got to be moving all in one direction, so.
There you go, you said it perfectly.
Henry, go ahead and ask your question, then Dr. Williams.
I, um, I happen to go out to the schools, I'm one of those, I like to drop in and actually see what's in action. I got the opportunity to witness teachers coming together at a certain period of the day and they were saying, we're gonna put lesson plans together. And I'm like, I remembered in a previous board meeting, Dr. Robert and I had this discussion, he gave me more clarity on. I missed, personally, I missed part of the communication. Cause I was under the impression that we had a group from the central office or, you know, and representatives from different levels that were putting lesson plans together to make a unique lesson plan to give to each grade level, which would be given to each school. But what I'm learned, what I have learned is that we are developing programs and that are resources, I should say, that the teachers can pull and put a lesson plan together. And they're coming together collectively within a particular school on a cer, on that particular grade level and saying, we're gonna put this and this, we're pulling a puzzle. We're using this part of the puzzle, this part and that part to reach the ultimate goal. Go to another school, they could be pulling from the same resources but not have the same lesson plan. And my next question was, if I'm a substitute teacher and I happen to drop in that classroom, what resources do I have? But Mr. Robert explained it, you know, it's too soon, too early and for a one day deal, it's hard, it's difficult to get clearance for someone to pull that lesson plan that may be developed. So I, I guess I misunderstood from a previous meeting what lesson plans was all about and how they're, how they're actually put together. But I do have a better vision now. And with that being said, I know we're using the same resources throughout the whole LEA. But, and I understand every school may be a little different, the needs may be different. But we get, we're just like, we're talking about math. I'm, I'm, I'm going back to what Mr. Craig said, you know? If we can simplify things and find a key solution, I think that's the right approach. That's the right spin, I should say.
So what you're addressing, I'll, I'll yield to Robert, but what you're addressing is the core.
Yeah.
What everyone pulls from.
Right.
Every student that we just showed, when we shared the video, that all students have the equitable opportunity.
Yes.
That needs to be met. So I don't know, Robert, if you wanna allude to that or you want?
So what, brother?
Dr. Williamson?
What Mr. Henry is saying is, the night I shared the instructional pacing guide and how?
And I hope I said everything correct.
And how that was developed by teachers, administrators, central officers.
Right.
And that's been, I think we started on those in 2019.
But, excuse me, there's a difference in the pacing guide, Mr. Henry, and the lesson plan.
Right, and as I'm getting, so, so based on that pacing guide, we developed a one-page template, lesson plan. So, and that was put together by principals, teachers, central office staff. So everybody had input. I think we had 780 teachers that actually responded.
Wow.
So once we got those kind of numbers, we said we felt like we had a good template that the majority of the teachers felt like this is what we need. And that's when we pushed that out. So you're right, the grade levels do come together based on that pacing guide and then they determine because they're on a multitude of resources for each strand or formative assessment or a central, so everything is broken down. So, but it, but the equity piece is there so that every child across the district is getting the same opportunity based on what that standard is for that particular.
And I'm saying that too, just for clarification.
Dr. Williamson's got the floor this time.
As we get into tomorrow, a lot of these questions will be answered. We move from lesson plan conversation to lesson design because the science of the business means we need to create some visual lessons. In fact, it was trained by federal program today on lesson design, lesson plans, that part of that, how it's aligned to, to the standards. Dr. Manuel, to the original question, we've had that conversation with principals that we can't have random acts, everybody doing their own thing, different directions, there's gotta be a common language. And so we've said we've moved away from random act to align management system, which means there's a common language, all our efforts, all our efforts important in the same way to do that. And, and so we're getting into that, but you're absolutely right. That was one of the first conversations, we cannot have random acts, we cannot have everybody doing something different.
Exactly.
So, the other part of, when you look at this framework, it becomes very evident, we recognize the bulk of all this work has to be done during instructional day. So part of our conversation is all this support helps with that. Because part of what the science and the data is going to do is help us to move further away from whole group instruction to small group instruction, meeting the individual needs of the students. And part of the training that we're doing with, with principals is, how are you spending that instructional time? How are you managing that instructional time? We know we got 1,025 hours. How are we gonna manage that time that we can meet the individual needs of every student? Where the science of it, the data is going to do that. But we're getting to all of that a bit more. We're having conversations around POCs. They have to be true POCs where we can really design, really plan, rather than just conversation, what I feel, what I think. The data, it really, really helps us. So we think we have things in place, one, how are we spending our time? Can we have an aligned management system? Can we use a common language? And the design of the lesson focused on task. If you notice, the work kids score is when higher, that's because it's applied application. And so we have an emphasis now on the applied part of what it is that we're designing. So teachers are standing in front of kids, teaching less, but the challenges, and we use the language of a productive struggle. How can they reason? How can they figure that? And then we've had a lot of conversation around, we cannot afford, and you know this as well as I do, we cannot afford to think that we're gonna gain ground if our focus is on summative anything. If we're gonna wait till the end of the week before we assess, if we're gonna wait for a month, we can't afford to do that. So our conversations are around the formative part of that, that feedback, starting with the principal when they go in and observe the classroom, buy that instant feedback, teachers buy that feedback, but then that instructional block that, that we can help kids understand. So there's a strong plan in place and we're moving towards that formative. Our lessons are formative, they're designed that way to get from kids what it is they know or don't know. And we can address it immediately to do that. But they're getting into all of that. But to your original question, random acts, we cannot afford to do. Gotta manage our time in an aligned system. And I think we're headed that way.
I, I, I agree. And I do understand exactly what you were saying, but the message has to be the same and that's regardless of who's walking into their, I learned in years ago, that if you have 15 people walking in your building, you can have 15 different messages.
That's right.
And I think that's what you were getting to.
Exactly.
When you have 15 different messages, you have people with knee jerk reactions, they don't know where you're going and they don't know where you're headed. So I think as we do progress, that message has to be one, it has to be seamless and it has to have that common language and that format because you will have people highly confused and highly frustrated. Those delivering the message will get frustrated and those receiving the message will be more frustrated, in my opinion. So I, I do appreciate that question.
Terry had to say that.
I just got one quick question. With what Mr. Henry said in the previous few comments, the thing that keeps resonating in my mind is, is strategic plan, strategic plan. Does this route back to the, does this framework here route back to the district's strategic plan?
Let me answer that question because you're right, at some point, we had to create that strategic plan. But the last time that we tested was, what, 1819? So we do not have a true baseline at this point to create a strategic plan. We will at the end of this year and then we'll know what we can achieve and we can use the science to help. But at this point, without having that clearly defined strategic plan, baseline, we, we can write something, but it's not be something that's gonna help us and that would drive our work. So without a yield, that's a great question, we're gonna, that's why we're celebrating this work and everybody's right, we're asking teachers to do more than, urgency to this work. There is an urgency to how do we close that gap? Where do we find the term and 1,025 hours? We can find, because we got to double up. I shared with you in the last board meeting, if we perform at the same level that we did in 1819, we still gonna be devastated. We have to create capacity and folks and we have to find the time to do it. And what we're trying to put in place will do that. But it needs to happen within that instructional day.
Okay, Jeff. Craig, you got a question?
The, the comment that was made about when we go into the schools or you folks go into the schools, that we're getting the same message. And I'm just gonna add to this, sometimes maybe, and this is just for thought, instead of five people going into the school, it might only need to be two. And maybe them two go in at the same time. Because I'm gonna say if five of us go into a school at different times, I don't know if we're gonna be able to give the exact same message each time we go. Now we can sit and plan and it should be the same. But sometimes going in at different times, you might not get the same thing delivered and that can cause frustration from those that are receiving it. So if, if two or three is working on a program, maybe those two or three can go in at the same time when they go to the school to deliver that message.
But let me make, can I make one comment, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, sure.
Uh, I guess now that you've said that and, and the superintendent's responding adequately, I think my concern is, who's giving the message? What is the message? Are all five of those contenders are sitting down, getting the same message? Who's developing the message? How are those five people at the table and they all leave out a room with the message? That's, I guess, what I'm concerned about.
And all those are the right questions. Back to this framework, one of the reasons, and you notice under the AP operations, that day to day managerial type things that they need to do to free up principals to really be the instructional leader, they're delivering the message. That's who it is, they're instructional leader. Our job when we go in is to monitor, to support, and then meet with principals if we see, because we'll be trained in that opposite feedback also, how do we provide that? But the message has to come from the principal as the instructional leader. We're pulling principals out to meet with them to make sure. We are experiencing some pushback from principals, no question about all of that. But we're gonna stay the course. And we shared in the workshop today, what percent of people do we need to push forward to make something work? It would surprise you if you're constant with what you do, 10%. If you can get 10% of an organization to buy into, buy into the word, that 10% is gonna drive and dictate and over time, everybody's gonna do it. And so we recognize that. But a powerful question is, if we go in, then the staff are gonna look at and say, well, they're gonna be in for a hour, a couple hours, that part of that, that's just human nature. But if the principal is in and having that conversation, that instructional conversation, it's gonna make a difference. You know what I've said to prin, to some teachers and principals and it's the truth, I'm not gonna be fussing it, I'm not gonna do that. Guess who I'm gonna hold accountable in the building?
Principal.
Principal is the instructional leader. If something's not happening in the building, I'm gonna have a conversation with the principal.
That's right.
Cause I know that we've done the training, we've laid it out clear. That's who I'm gonna have, that's who I'm holding accountable.
That's right.
Is that instructional leader, you know why, look at this framework, they have more support than ever had.
Yes, they do.
More opportunity. There are the instructional leaders, I'm holding them accountable. It's their responsibility and job to hold the teachers in here accountable.
That's right.
Monitor and do that work. That's who I'm holding accountable. Everybody holding accountable, myself, with the instructional leader, that's who's gonna deliver the message. That's who's gonna lead some of the staff of element in the building. That's who's gonna monitor POCs, not to invade them, but to make sure they're happening and take, that's who's gonna monitor how we're spending our time, instructional time in the building. It's our instructional leader at building present. Cause the research, gotta have teachers, no question, but the research is clear, is that principal.
Okay. About 10 till nine, I don't know where you're headed now or if you're saying?
We would like to conclude with this message.
Okay.
Because the work that we are getting, actually will require some conversations, some interaction. And, and, and if you'll look at the very next slide, and we will conclude, this is where we're heading for the, for our presentation, we're looking at the framework for school and district transformation. And so what we'll be using is those areas that you see up there from our comprehensive needs assessment. So as we work through the comprehensive needs assessment, if you'll notice, we're actually honing in on instructional excellence and alignment. Based on our previous conversation with accountability, one would know why we're spending quite a bit of time there and what we're doing. And that captures the work that we're doing in the district. You were asking about what is it you're doing? That captures the work that we're moving forward in the district. You'll see under leadership capacity, that leveraging leadership, that instructional focus that Dr. Williamson has already talked about, that how do you conduct an appropriate observation and provide feedback to your teachers so that they can go in and fixate on that learning and focus on teaching and learning? And so we'll go through that tomorrow with the presentations that we're providing. We will not go very heavily into family and community engagement, but those areas, we will address those areas, which is our framework for district and school transformation. And we'll explain how all of these connect and create that focus for that instructional leader along with the work that the instructional leader will continue to do. So it's a seamless rope as we provide the continuity of services, it's a seamless message that we're sharing to the instructional leaders as that instructional leader conveys that message in the building. Can't be a principal without being an instructional leader. So if that, that kind of sums it up, let us rest our, our conversations for tomorrow in those areas.
Yeah. Mr. Williams, we got, I know on my book here it says we start at eight o'clock and I know the night said we stop. What time will people be able to log on tomorrow? At 9:00 AM, you can log back in if you want to see the rest of the workshop or be engaged. Gray, are you on the line still? Is Gray yet still on the line?
I am.
Do we just need to recess this meeting or, or how do we need to do this?
Well, you can recess it, but it's already been posted for tomorrow, so either way you wanna do it.
We can just leave and come back in the morning?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody good, any other?
Everybody good? Any other comments or questions?
Clarification, we start at nine in the morning?
We start at eight, but the video, the video won't start until nine.
Starting to negotiate.
Working.
She did not hear your message.
It's turning at eight. Some of them won't be here at eight, trust me.
I need one messenger.
All right. We'll see y'all in the morning. Thank you.